So please stand and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Secretary to note, roll call.
Steve Mickey Pat.
Now, Pat, do you have a board correspondent report?
I'm still on mute.
She has to unmute yourself.
Unmute yourself. Pat.
Star six.
Star six, Pat. So that you can unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good, okay. Um, this is very difficult to understand. I've read it about fifteen times and I'm not quite sure I get it. But because some state statute, um, the Joint Finance Committee can decide uh where ten percent of the federal coronavirus funds can go. Um, and it can, they can decide that and they don't have to have a full legislature or governor approval on it. The DPI wanted to distribute the funds equitably. But the Joint Finance Committee wants to distribute the funds based on the extent unto which uh schools are providing in-person instruction. You can imagine the paperwork that they're going to have to provide for this. Um, it's going to come down to the minutes and hours of instruction. Um, so this could be a bit of a nightmare, but I'm not sure how because you know, we've been in school since it started. I don't know how that would break down for us, but we'll have to figure that, they'll figure that one out. Um, they are, the state is also working on a bill that would actually save school districts money. Because we wouldn't have to publish our meetings in the paper any longer. We could do it on, on the website. So that, I know that's been a problem since you kind of lost our newspaper. That would be a good thing. Um, the state COVID response bill is kind of being tossed back and forth between the, between the House and the Senate and it's in the amendment phase, last I checked, so we'll see how that turns out. And then Governor Evers gave his budget. Um, it's quite generous to education. Six hundred and, almost six hundred and thirteen million in general state aid. Twenty dollars per pupil increase. It raises the little revenue ceiling from ten thousand to ten thousand two fifty the first year, and then up to ten thousand five hundred the second year. Um, there's additional money in there in category aid for special ed. Um, and then there is additional money in the special ed, the special education, um, fund by two hundred ninety-seven million. Uh, first year, four hundred and thirteen million the second year. Um, and they would all, that would, those things would reimburse special education of cost at forty-five percent the first year and fifty percent the next year, which would help out our district immensely. Um, then they're also want to do a, he's also proposing an adjustment for the rolling three-year membership, you know, the, the, on average because of COVID, because your kids weren't enrolled in school, they didn't want to go. Um, so the numbers are going to be down, so they want to readjust that a bit because of the COVID. Um, there's also provides money for, um, school sparsity aid, transportation aid, nutritional aid. Um, but then again, you know, that's just what he's proposing. Uh, we'll have to see what happens once it gets, once it gets to the legislature, so. That's it.
Yeah, Pat, did you also hear anything about, there's a bill, um, that, I think it's a senate bill, where anybody who attends virtual, um, school anywhere should be allowed to participate in the sports in their home.
Um, yeah, I did see that too.
And then, and then it also had something about WIAA, which I didn't really understand, but.
Well, when it comes to WIAA, I, I don't think they really know what they're doing, but I did see that, that, that bill. I don't know where that's going to go, but.
Yeah, yeah, but like you said, Governor Evers, Evers' bill is very generous to education. I sure hope some of it sticks, but now it goes down to the negotiation.
Well, I'm not expecting, you know, it's going to change. What, you know, what it is, who knows, it's going to be anybody's guess.
Right.
So.
Any questions for Pat? All right, we'll move on. Nick, do you have any report from CISA?
Well, I really don't have too much. Um, I know at the last path meeting, they, of course, it's all virtual. They had all the candidates there for the superintendent of schools. Um, except for one, the teacher could not make it. And from what I understand, uh, that Deborah Kerr and this Jill Underley will be on the ballot in April. Um, and just, I want to make sure everybody knows that Sue Today from Sebastopol was elected the WSB Board President, so that's a new role for her. That's about it.
Okay, any questions for Nick? During that, we will move on. Citizens delegation to be heard. Um, this is call-in only. Is there anybody online that would like to speak? If so, please state your name and the topic. And star six if you are on the line. I hear nothing, so I'm going to move on to board president announcements. I guess I, I just have a couple of general statements initially. Um, just today sort of hit me about the incredible times we're living in. Um, incredibly bad milestone, we're getting to five hundred thousand COVID deaths in our country, sad and bad, but incredibly amazing that we actually got video from Mars of the perseverance lander landing. I mean, it's, we are truly in an incredible time in so many different ways and, uh, yeah, and, and sort of, it just sort of hits you with the responsibility of how do we prepare our kids in all of this, you know? I mean, it is, it is a big question mark, you know, traditional thought just isn't going to go anywhere anymore because we are in a new age. But it's exciting too, so we'll, we'll tackle it together. Uh, the main thing I wanted to just quickly go through was, um, letting the board know what the Wisconsin Association School Board resolutions were passed. Um, I'm not going to go into any, um, great detail on them. I'm sure you can look it up if you want, but these are the ones that were passed and WASBA will be lobbying for, for us. Um, the first one, Resolution twenty-one oh one was a one cent sales task for sales tax for school infrastructure, technology and tax relief. Um, Resolution twenty-one oh two was broadband access. Resolution twenty-one oh three, um, basically is, is titled enrollment hold harmless? And that was what, um, Pat was actually talking about in terms of the, the pupil number counts, you know, not being held against the districts because of COVID. Um, Resolution twenty-one oh four, instruction on indigenous tribes, the nineteen eighty-nine Wisconsin Act thirty-one. Resolution twenty-one oh five, special education flexibility to address emergencies. And again, um, this is also, um, talking about the services to the students disrupted by this public health emergency of COVID. Um, Resolution twenty-one oh six, assessment and report card waivers. Um, Resolution twenty-one oh seven, rehiring retired teachers and staff. Resolution twenty-one oh eight, um, it was, it was titled superintendent evaluation, but it was really, um, talking about, um, allowing districts to, um, provide a confidential framework for the leaders of the district. And it, it ended up in a conversation of other, other positions are covered and so should superintendent. Um, the Resolution twenty-one oh nine, comprehensive school safety legislation. And this one, we had a long discussion, just which ended up in some changes in wording. But basically, the school safety legislation they're talking about is security improvements. Um, hiring SROs, coordinating with community agencies, training for staff and students about threat safety. Um, de-escalation techniques, anti-bullying, mental health services, and equipping school crisis teams to react to threats. Um, the resolution was modified, so it was, which may include, but are not limited to the things that I talked about. Um, and then finally, um, Resolution twenty-one ten, school district mascots, logos and imagery. Which I apparently was one that had been brought up in the past and immediately dismissed and, um, it's encouraging school boards and district, and districts to identify imagery practices or processes that may create a school environment that is not safe and welcoming to all students. So those are the resolutions that were considered and passed, and that is what WASBA will be trying to work with to, to move forward. It sounds like Governor Evers already has addressed some of the things, like the pupil, the hold harmless, so. All right, that's all I have, so we'll move on to administration reports. We will start with you, Nick, superintendent's report.
I just want to make sure that everybody can hear me.
You want to come up?
Yeah, I'm not close to a microphone or anything, so I just want to make sure that people can hear me.
Does it sound like that?
Stereo for. Right, so the first thing I want to talk about is our insurance consortium update. As you know, um, this is an ongoing battle all the time and this year was no different. My renewal, preliminary renewal came back, double-digit increases again, it's just ridiculous. Um, so they went on to bid and we are now getting information back, our consortium meets next Monday, um, and obviously we'll choose, but, um, decent things back now that it's into a manageable zone, I'll call it, but um, we'll see what happens because it's also, um, time for new leadership in the consortium and that will weigh heavily on how we proceed in the future because as you may or may not know, the, it's the first time ever that the consortium is split basically north and south. Um, so basically the southern schools are, um, with a different provider than the schools in Doric County, so. It's an interesting kind of makeup and we'll see where things go with that. Um, second, just reorganization, obviously, um, kudos to Katie. I think she's been doing a wonderful job in the the high school principal role. Um, kudos to Maria for all of her work down at the elementary school. It's, uh, it's been great to work with them both in a different capacity. Um, I think the admin team is, you know, finding our roles and, um, you know, staying in our lanes and making sure that we, um, are being the best team that we possibly can, so I'm happy with that. And then lastly, on a selfish standpoint, I find I have more time now to actually be a, be present throughout the district, not just here dealing with stuff all the time, so. And you actually schedule days down at the elementary and uh, get down there as well, so it's a good thing. Um, the venture charter progress, the grant was submitted, uh, that's, uh, all the credit that goes to Teal and Abigail. Uh, they worked their tails off to get that submitted on the seventeenth. The next step is we will kind of finalize the governance board for that, and then once that governance board is finalized, then the work between this board's ad hoc committee and that governance board will begin and over the next whatever, um, sixty-eight weeks, we'll work on a contract. Then once that ad hoc committee and the governance board agree on a contract, then that contract would come to the full school board, um, and then you would basically say, yeah, authorize your venture charter school, um, so that's exciting, um. And I think to your point, Mark, before, um, we have to do things differently. Um, our kids are telling us we need to do things differently. Society in general is telling us that we need to do things differently. And I know that Kitty Horn and myself and Teal and Abigail have had conversations with many, many different, uh, students in the district or well, in this building because it's seven twelve, but just really interesting to sit down with them in small groups and ask them what works, what doesn't work. Um, um, so it's been really fun. We actually got a chance to meet with um, one of the governance board members, uh, from Denmark's Community School, which is started, who is also a school board member there, so they serve on the governance board. Actually, I think they're done on the governance board now, but now they're on the regular school board and it was just really refreshing to talk to them and just realize that there are so many connections that we can make. And then lastly, obviously, being the first one in Doric, Kewa County is a standard for us, um, and I think sets us up well for the, for the future on that, so. Lots of exciting things, um. Yeah, very, 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 very interesting times.
So the progress and so much. So Nick, are we going to become like, the currently there's the Jedi Academy that is headquartered out of, I think, Lake Mills School District, that some of the school districts around here um, are part of a consortium, I think is what it's called. Um, is, are we going to become essentially the Lake Mills hub for a new charter? Yeah.
Really?
We're not going to be in a consortium.
No.
We're going to.
So that, their charter there would be, uh, they probably have it set up where they are in their organization, they are utilizing multiple school districts, why would not? So we would be really an instrumentality of the Algoma School District, so we, as a charter, would follow same policies, the school district is going to hire the employees, all that stuff, and that's why the contract between the governance board and this board is so important, so that's crystal clear how we operate. But it's also crystal clear what autonomy the charter school has versus what the legacy school or the traditional school does, so. I think that particular example is just their organizational kind of framework and how they started.
Right.
There is a, another one in the Keel area where they do it for, um, I would say, I think it's at-risk kids, kind of credit recovery, and they have set up kind of a not necessarily a college consortium, but it's a more of a buy-in type thing, that the rural virtual academy is very similar thing, they serve you know, most of the state now, um. In time, we will likely see students from other school districts choose to attend, um.
And that would be sort of an, well, it would be open enrollment if they want to become part of this school district, but.
They could actually open a role, they're going to actually put a role to the Algoma School District, and then their program would be the venture charter. So no different than if they put a role here.
Right.
And their program is Pathfinder.
Okay.
So same exact thing, um, just organization of it.
Thank you for that clarification, it helped.
Yep.
Any other questions for Nick?
Do you have any idea how many charter schools there are currently in the state?
I don't want to guess, I don't want to get it wrong.
Yeah, okay.
Um, I know that there, there are areas of the state that they are very prevalent.
Yeah.
Fox Valley, uh, Appleton, I believe, has thirteen or fourteen alone in their own district. Green Bay, um, has like three or four now. Um, Denmark obviously has one. Um, but I would say there's more pockets of them than it is a widespread thing. That's why when I look at Doric, Kewa County, there isn't, not a single one, so I think it's a a good move for us, allows us to do things the way we have been doing them for ten years. Um, while also kind of embracing innovation, research and development and all that stuff, so.
There's two hundred and forty-four.
Okay, two hundred and forty-four.
Who's the numbers guy?
There's four hundred and thirty-five regulars, so.
Yeah, okay. All right, any other questions for me? All right, we will move on to the elementary principals report. A survey.
Hi, everybody, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, I have a few other names just to update you on. Um, the first being a huge congratulations to Chuck Brettle. Um, he has been, um, recognized as a twenty-twenty-one Golden Apple Teacher of Distinction. Um, he, um, basically what this, what this recognition means is that he's one of forty-five teachers who were selected, um, out of the entire application and, um, screening process to kind of represent the program, so a huge congratulations to him, um, on that recognition. It is very, very much well-deserved. Um, if you know Mr. Bretle, he is willing to do anything for his students and he just has a really great way of connecting to his students and also showing them hands-on types of things that, um, are just really great for them to know. So again, huge congratulations to him. Um, I also wanted to give a thank you to the Herb Cole philanthropies organization. Um, just recently, about a week and a half ago, they funded a bunch of our elementary classroom, um, Donors Choose projects. Um, if you're not familiar, Donors Choose is a platform where educators from all across the country can post different projects that they're working on in their classroom. Um, public donors can contribute to the projects and then every now and then, um, the organization, the Herb Cole organization, um, funds just a whole bunch of them all at once, so that impacted four different projects, um, within our elementary classrooms. One of those projects being in Danielle DePerry's classroom, um, she was, her project involved flexible seating in the classroom, so, um, she received some items that allowed her students to do that, as well as some organizational types of things for her classroom. Um, Rachel, Mrs. Rachel Price, she had, her project provided all of the second grade students in all three classrooms with a ton of nonfiction texts. Um, they do these big research projects and, um, being a second grade student, you have students who are interested in all different things, so she kind of put that project together just to get some more text for them to be able to access. And then Mrs. Robinson, Jamie Robinson, she, um, if you haven't seen her classroom since the beginning of the school year, um, as the, as the quarters have gone on, she's removed more and more furniture, so she no longer has any desks or tables in her classroom. It's all flexible seating, um, it's just a really great innovative, um, learning environment for the students, and so her project that was funded provided additional flexible seating, um, for her students to be able to spread out and just kind of learn in a way that best suits their needs. So, um, a huge thank you again, um, to Herb Cole philanthropies organizations for being able to, um, provide our students in our classrooms with those things. Um, February is Black History Month, um, the elementary classrooms have been focusing on inclusion and diversity. Um, teachers have integrated these themes into their classrooms across the curriculum based on their content areas. There's been poetry writing, um, there's been research projects. Um, and then every classroom also designed a door and hallway decoration, um, to kind of aesthetically represent that as well. Um, and this, this whole effort was, is a very, very small step in a work group that we are a part of with Pastor Jen Taylor, uh, Pastor Gem. He emerged from the United Methodist Church and, um, we're working together with her. We're just committed to learning more about diversity, more about inclusion, equity, um, and basically developing ways to kind of involve our staff and our students um, in learning more about themselves and learning more about each other. Um, we also, in the month of February, have kicked off some grade level projects, collaborative projects. Um, we kind of felt like this year really focused on kind of survival, um, you know, everything was, everything revolved around COVID and guidelines and procedures and changing this and changing that. Um, that we really wanted to start kind of working on some things that were, um, important for our students and important for our grade levels, so Whitney Herman, who is our reading specialist and myself, we have been meeting with grade levels bi-weekly now, um. And it's a little bit different than our typical PLC structure, um, it's more so for the purpose of really getting to um, see the day-to-day functionings of each grade level, seeing how we can support them, what can we work on together? What do we want to focus on to improve? Um, and it's a little bit of accountability as well because so much time can go by without, you know, with all these great ideas and no action plan, so we just kind of want to, um, work on that collectively. We have grade levels working on science, STEM, hands-on related things. We have grade levels working on math, um, reading, kind of everything and anything, um, that you can imagine, but it's definitely tailored to each grade level and what is relevant to them. And then lastly, we do have our child development screening, uh, which is underway. Um, it looks a little bit different this year. Um, typically, we schedule two days for the students who are being screened to come into the elementary school and complete the screening that way. However, um, given the situation, we've had to make some adjustments to that. So if you have a child, if anyone in the district has a child with a birthday between September first, two thousand sixteen and December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen, there is a form that is on our district website that can be filled out and then you will be contacted with next steps um, in the screening process. So we're just kind of taking it more on an individual basis. Um, but we're still hoping to get a good participation in that, um, and obviously we're encouraging, um, any family in the district who has children between the ages of two and four that have never been screened, um, to uh, complete that process with us. Um, if you do have any questions, you can contact our early childhood teacher, Rachel Schneider, just by calling the school office. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Katie. I was very excited to see the Classroom Donors Choose projects as one of the agenda items because I got very excited about that program, hearing about it during convention, and it was one of the things I was going to hope that we could take advantage of, so. Once again, we have already been doing something that, so that's wonderful.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's wonderful. Questions for Katie? All right, Karen, then we will move on to you, Katie Horn, middle school, high school principal.
All right, I will start with Pathfinder, so just a couple of little short things. Um, our seniors are starting to wrap up their credits, looking to be done early, um, and they're doing the last thing that has kind of just been a loose requirement, Pathfinder for graduating, which is getting a job. So we only have two in-person seniors who currently don't have jobs, but they're both interviewing this week, so it's looking, um, pretty positive for them. Which we're really excited about. Um, the job helps the students earn their elective credits that they usually have left at the end, so. It's kind of in the past been their ticket to graduation from Pathfinder, so, um, it's pretty exciting for those kids. And then we just have two juniors who, uh, typically have been, you know, kids who have not been so successful in the classroom that this week have been pursuing some college, um, interest late, uh, sorry, they've been pursuing different college paths, um, so this week they both were on webinars with MWTC and Bellin College. Um, you know, it seems like a small task for most kids. You know, it seems like a small task for most kids, but for them, it's really been a huge motivator to see what their options could be after high school. So it's really giving them a new reason to keep getting their work done, which is exciting for them. My principal report, scheduling. So I asked the teachers to submit their dream schedules to me for next year. And after getting their dream schedules, I am just learning that we need to have kind of a new conversation. A lot of the dream schedules were identical to schedules that have happened in the past or happened pre-COVID. And yes, it's effective for some students, but I think we also really need to reflect on what COVID has taught us in regards to student wants and needs. Like Nick had talked about, we've been having a lot of conversations with students. I brought in quite a few myself. From, you know, grade seven through twelve, students that were in person, virtual, I think I kind of talked about this last time, but when I talked to them, I kind of narrowed their answers down to four categories of what they really want. They really want combination scheduling, so the the ability to learn, you know, virtually, hybrid or virtual. They said that the learning space matters. They don't want to be tied to a seat in the classroom. They want learning facilitators, not teachers that, you know, typically would lecture them. And lastly, they really wanted application-based learning. So after talking to the kids, it's very clear that we, you know, cannot go back to pre-COVID teaching and learning. You know, Barb, I know you talked about that before too. Yes, it's safe and comfortable for teachers, but it's not what the students want, nor is it what they need to be successful. So we'll be having more conversations and PLCs about scheduling for next year. I know we're kind of late in the game, but as, you know, COVID happens, everything's been changing. So that's where we're at with scheduling. And the spring assessment schedule, we have ACT coming up on March ninth. All juniors will be taking the test in person at the high school. Forward testing is going to be April twelfth through the sixteenth, so seventh, eighth and tenth graders. And then ACT Aspire for our ninth and tenth graders will take place April twentieth to April twenty-third. And that is all I have.
All right, thank you, Katie. Any questions for Katie Horn? All right, here and then we will move on to you, Jason, Business Manager's Finance Bulletin Report.
So the first thing that we'll cover is deficits, so that's on the agenda for tonight. We have the final numbers from the lawyers. So we're going on that first page. With doing deficits of five hundred and eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars, we will end up saving a hundred and twenty thousand of one hundred and twelve dollars. While also cutting off basically two years totally and a little bit of a third year in our payments. So basically, with the deficits, we take the money and we send it to Barrett Financial. And they handle the purchase of the bonds and stocks in order to pay off our debt and do callables when they can. General cost for the deficits, you will see that the consulting fee is five thousand. The bond consult fee is four thousand two hundred and fifty. The escrow agent fee is one thousand six hundred and fifty and the verification fee is two thousand. So it's an expensive endeavor, but in the long run, it does end up saving money. If you turn the page, it's just sort of a breakdown of what will actually happen with the bond proceeds, the cash, the cost of issuance. You can see that it comes to that five hundred and eighty-nine thousand, nine eighty-seven total. The next couple of pages are basically a breakdown of what they will do and what they can call at certain times. Probably the most important part is page three. You can sort of see when our principles do and what it will look like when we call those bonds. Just a little reminder why up above, it looks a little weird because we have no principal. Back when we did a referendum, we applied for QZAB. I don't know if you guys remember that. So that is our basically money. Certain portion of our referendum was money that we do not have to pay. Actually, we only have to pay interest on. So that is why you were seeing that there. Page one more time. Basically, they can sort of see what they're going to call as good descriptions. Any other questions of the deficits? I include every graph that I was given from Barrett. Really, the front page is sort of the summary of everything.
And this again represents one being a couple together because you were waiting because of the fees and all.
Yep, so this is two years. So DPI will allow you to do two-year double. So as you guys know, we were paying the lawyers, the control units, the pumps. And this is scheduled, you know, if you schedule your house for heating, we can now schedule the school for heating. So at night it turns off. You know, as the morning approaches, it turns on and I can't stop. So I just want to give you a little comparison. Season, but I'm comparing July through February for the last couple of years and then this year on the, the little graph right here. As you can see, in twenty seventeen, our July through February heating bill was forty-four thousand. In twenty eighteen, it was fifty thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. In twenty nineteen, it was forty thousand, seventy dollars. And this year, our July through February heating bill has been twenty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars. So just to give you a little update on that, it's a forty-eight percent savings over twenty seventeen, it's a fifty-four percent savings over twenty eighteen and a forty-three percent savings over twenty nineteen. So it's, it's working out good. I think heating seems to be going good. The project was good. Oh, yes. So with this, our part of our construction project was our solar. And really, we haven't had much data with the solar yet. We haven't had rain very long. Plus, we haven't been through a summer, which obviously solar summer makes sense, that kind of stuff. But I did get an interesting call this morning. So Pete Hawk, who is the head of the utilities, called me and said, hey, did you guys do anything over the weekend at school that would mess up the, you know, like, did we turn off the school? Did we turn off the power grid? Do we do construction? So no, we're, we're fine. I actually even checked the security cameras just to see if anything was going on. And I didn't have a clue and that kind of stuff. So it brought it to me. I said, why are you asking? And he said, well, because we showed zero power consumption for the high school. I said, oh, let's go check out the solar. So I went to check out solar with Pete. And sure enough, on Saturday, we generated more power than we used. So we actually sold back to the utility. So, so unique experience and obviously hopefully we will get more of that as, you know, summer approaches and that kind of stuff.
So are you saying you disagree with Governor Abbott of Texas? That solar and wind might not have been the cause of the problem?
I, I don't think that quite, you could quite blame solar in that.
Yeah, that's exciting. Oh, that's very exciting.
So, so yeah, so I look forward to giving you guys eventually a little update on solar when we have a little more data. We've been running the solar for a pretty good three solid months now. And we've been generating a fair amount. But as, I think as the days get longer, as it gets closer to summer, I think we'll be able to you know, see the benefit of that solar. I really do think that our payback is going to be really good. I know that the long term is fifteen years, but that's with everything staying the same, including prices of electricity, everything like that. So I think we will be able to beat that. So.
Excellent.
Can you, can you do a dollar figure in that, Jason? Yeah.
Well, just to give you an idea, our last bill, we sold back six hundred and twenty-seven dollars worth of electricity. So, like I said, it's hard to compare solar right now because I have nothing to compare it to and we've only been running it for such a short period of time.
And the whole, the whole project is, has kicked in now?
The whole project is, yeah, it's fully functional right now. Yep, it's, the whole project is complete. And we've been running with the server for a good three months now.
And we're making about six hundred dollars worth a month of electricity with that?
Well, it's, it's, okay, I explained this. So we were, we got six hundred and twenty-seven dollars worth of credit for our server. This would have been last month. So basically, it saved us six hundred some dollars for that month. Now, obviously, as generation gets more, we're hoping to obviously bring that down even more. So just to give you an idea, our average bill is around five, six thousand dollars at the high school. And we're looking at basically four thousand, four thousand five hundred now in the last couple of months.
Okay.
Jason, hey, this is Nikki. I had a taxpayer call me last week and wanted to know if we could give some information out in the newspapers, you know, the free newspaper out on our website about this solar, these solar panels. So the taxpayers know that we install them and, and what benefit they have for the district. Is that something we can put together?
Yep. So on the bottom of our website, at the very bottom, it says solar project. If you click on that, that will tell you exactly what we're generating at a specific time. It also tells you what it, like, how much we generate that would save in carbon dioxide, how many, how many trees would have to be planted saved. It tells you the water that is saved by that generation. So anyone in the community can go to our website, go to the very bottom of the homepage and it says, High School Solar Project right at the bottom. And it'll give a graph and it'll tell you everything that we've saved. And you can put in your own date ranges, you can search by week, month, and learn anything that you want about our solar project.
Okay, and that's great. I mean, I think that's great, but for those taxpayers that have no reason to go to our website, couldn't we, can we get that information and put us, put a one-time thing in the paper so it's out there for people to read? Is what he was asking.
A world review, is that what you're thinking? In our paper, in our? Are you thinking the Kiwanee Star?
The Kiwanee Star, absolutely. That little creepy one is what?
Sure, that's a good idea.
Come on out and do a feature on it.
And I will say, as someone who knows solar panels, the solar panels actually produce the most on a sunny, very cold day. Of course, they can't have any ice on them. And unfortunately, I, I drove by a couple of weeks ago after that awful cold spell where everything just came down and coated with like half. And I was like, oh, yeah, or, you know, that's, that's a hazard. But yeah, it's very exciting having the sun giving us power.
What other school districts are, are taking this approach around here?
Around here. Doubled in it. So like, we've had our solar panels up on our roof for, oh, probably eight, ten years, or maybe even more than that. As far as I know, we have the largest project in this Kiwanee County, Door County area. By, by far.
Anybody calling up and saying, hey, how's that working?
Well, I did get a call asking about our vendor and whether, why did we choose these panels versus going some other different route? And why do we put it on the ground? That's been the biggest question. Why do we put it on ground versus a row? So that's been the biggest question from places that I've called. So it, it's been interesting talking to these people. Our project is what they consider a mid-sized project. So it's neat, you know, and hopefully, like I said, with the warranties being as they are and our payback, I think we'll definitely do good with it.
Well, we also took advantage of a, a tax credit for, by doing the timing, a rebate, yes, by doing the timing that we did.
Uh, Jason? Dave here. Getting back to Mick's point, have we made any attempt with the news media to get somebody out there to do a story on it?
We have not ourselves, Focus on Energy, did do it up with the, for their magazine. With around three months, we have not really put anything together as far as like our own publication.
Why don't we do something, try to get news from a TV station out there?
We certainly try.
Why don't we try to get a TV station out there and get some credit for what we're doing?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm giving for anything. So we can certainly try. And like I said, once you get a little bit more data, I think it'd be a lot easier to show what our progress is and why we've gone ahead with this project.
Well, let's put a, let's put a target date on it, three months or four months. When we got some information, let's try and get a TV station out there and, and do a story on it.
Real time? Jordan Rogers doesn't know where El Goma is.
Yeah, there you go.
This is Teal. We, we did, I mean, Nick did talk about it in his communication letter. I know we did it on Facebook, but I agree that it's not enough. I think there should be news and I think that'd be easy to do. And maybe if we do our board goal report again this year in the Wolf Review, that would be an awesome thing to put under the fiscal responsibility section to showcase what we're doing.
Yeah, good idea. Any other questions? All right. We will move on. Special Ed report. Maria, are you with us tonight?
I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. I didn't know if my star sticks if I did it too soon. Okay. My first report is on our very own abilities project. They are just continuing to amaze us with their ongoing creativity and hard work. Their latest creation, they're selling three-dollar masks in both youth and adult sizes that say Irish for kindness in time for St. Patrick's Day. You can find them selling in the Community Wellness Center on Fridays from nine-thirty to ten-thirty AM. Another effort to show support for individuals with Down Syndrome. We are in the process of ordering some T-shirts that say Love Doesn't Count Chromosomes in time for World Down Syndrome Day on March twenty-first. So if you're interested in a T-shirt, you could contact Jamie Selsider at the elementary school by Wednesday, the twenty-fourth. If you're interested in ordering and showing your support. Next, we are kind of starting the conversation around seeking out candidates for a special education teacher at the elementary school as well as an additional in-person speech and language pathologist to meet our ongoing and growing student needs. Lastly, upon meeting with our elementary special education staff, I received a lot of positive feedback. I received a lot of positive feedback regarding, uh, monthly staff check-ins. And providing a platform to those teachers and staff, um, to ask questions, share concerns, bright spots. Um, and I also received some feedback about a request to have a more easily accessible, clear and consistent, um, guide. To our district's referral process for special education. And that's really all I had this evening.
Hey, thank you. Any questions for Maria? All right, thank you. Um, we'll keep moving. Good Elgoma monthly update. Teal.
Um, I'm gonna start with some, uh, school improvement things. We've been working really hard this year amongst COVID nineteen to keep the staff health and wellness stuff going. Um, so in conjunction with Nick's report on the insurance consortium. Each year we are held to, um, a matrix of a series of things that, um, our district needs to accomplish in order to. Um, I guess, you know, show that we're part of the consortium and doing our due diligence, um, to have staff health and wellness. This year, uh, today, actually Allison, Denise and myself filled that out and I was just very proud of our district. Um, by the offerings that we have, the incentives that we have of biometric screenings. Um, and so, uh, I just wanted to say kudos to everybody on the wellness committee. I know we often, often don't talk about that enough, but. Really throughout this whole time, I think that we've done a really, a great job of staying ahead of the game and, and providing what our staff needs, um, especially during this time. I wanted to give two quick report outs, um, for some grants that we have in Operation Wolf Den, um, and the Community Youth Advocate. Um, grant position, they're starting to align efforts, um, especially in regards to our youth profiles. So our community youth advocate does have a profile on some of the youth that she works with. Um, really tying in, you know, anything that we can to see what the whole story is of the child and how do we. Think preventively to make sure that we're all aligned to the same shared goal. Um, this year, our stu-, uh, social work intern Avery Robinson from UWGB is working. Um, in conjunction with our community youth advocates, um, to ensure that those profiles are started at an earlier age. Um, so that we are starting to especially, um, in regards to our connect the dot questions. I think I had talked about that at the last time. Um, the state has been wanting to spread and scale our profiles and also our connect the dot approach. And really the connect the dots just simply means, um, by high school, we want our youth that we're working with. Um, to be able to name five people. That really support them and we call them that, that like their dots. Um, they usually start with best friends or family members and we would like to make sure that at least two or three of those five. Are people in the community that are outside of their best friends and outside of their immediate family. Uh, so there's a series of questions that, um, we ask the youth, but also the dots that's identified. And really we're just trying to ensure that, um, that the dot person knows that they are a support system for our youth. And to start developing those connections and, and a sense of belonging. Uh, that will all be reported out to the state on June, in June, we have a presentation to the state about this, so. Uh, just very excited that, um, Avery is, is part of that, um, and is connecting those two initiatives together. Um, and regards to the community youth advocate as well, we are having some, uh, challenging times. We are. Supposed to quarterly have task force meetings with all entities that are part of this grant. So that would be our local law enforcement, our county social work, and then, um, our school district. And it's been extremely difficult to ensure that we have representation from all entities. So, uh, really giving kudos to, uh, Amanda, our community youth advocate for thinking of a process we've been working the last couple of weeks to. Ensure that we can try to get their voice at the table because it is essential when we are working with these youth to try to prevent some of the. Experiences that they're, they're, they are experiencing or, uh, to prevent some of the things from happening and to ensure that they're. That we, um, understand the care plan for them or the, the goal, so. Uh, more to come on that. I'm hoping for better outcomes at this next meeting, um, but I just wanted to be very transparent about that. Um, and then nationally, we have a couple of, um, exciting things ahead. Um, one is that the National Civic League, we met, we as in Nick and, and myself had met with the Community Development Committee. Um, and presented the banner program. Basically, it means that the city can receive fifteen free, uh, all-American city banners to be. Um, hung on light poles throughout the main streets. Um, this would be free. Uh, however, there's a little catch, meaning that they would, um, have letters, a, a letter that would be on the city letterhead and distributed either by. Um, our mayor or the city administrator just asking if there's other businesses that would want to support that effort. Um, of course, they do not have to, um, it's just more or less them trying to, to, to market that they're doing that. Um, and it was really well received. I wasn't quite sure, uh, wha- what direction it was going to take, but the, the, uh, CDC and the city administrator was really supportive of that effort. Um, so we have more to come with that. Um, also annually, we have a two thousand five hundred dollar, um, membership fee to continue to be part of the National Civic League. So unlike the, uh, Culture of Health Award with the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation. This, this in, uh, request is, is for a membership fee to stay in this network and what that would pay for. Uh, would be you, you would have a ad in the, uh, twenty twenty-one All-America Cities Program. Our name and logo would be on the supporters page and in their journal publication that goes out annually. Um, we would have access to member information on their website and the biggest thing I think is we have a discount on any of the community assistance that we would need. So we did bring that forth, uh, to the CDC, um, committee and asked if they would be willing to pay half of that. Um, because we do think this is, um, this network would be very beneficial for our city to be involved in. And so, um, they were really excited about that and, and seemed very supportive. So we will be filling out a grant application, um, for those funds. Um, additionally, with National Civic League, the, um. Kettering Foundation, did I say that right, Nick? I always mess that up. Kettering, right?
Yes.
The Kettering Foundation, okay. They are, um, doing a new national research project focused on cities and government working with each other and on community problems. And they had asked if we could, uh, be part of this, um, interview, um, addressing two questions. Um, so one is what would government working with the people look like and two, what improves if a community uses a with approach? So, um, there's just a, a two-part interview with that and, and our, our voices will be. Um, representing Elgoma, obviously, in our perspective and, um, contributing to their next research development that will be sent out nationally. So that's pretty exciting. Um, and finally, I think I'm definitely asking for help on this. Um, and I sent Nick my report if he wants to send out at least just this part, um, so you can see it more in detail. Uh, but the National Academy of Science, Engineering and Medicine, I have my first board meeting on Friday. And they are working directly with, um, the new administration, which they always do, um, but the new administration has a charge for them. In their research and they have a series of questions. That they, uh, would like me to address. So it's, it's me and two other people. As, uh, the board associates addressing these questions, but really representing the community voice. Um, that, that we represent. So, um, I'll just list a couple of questions, but, um, again, we'll email this out. And if you have any thoughts to those questions, I would love to hear them, um, and present. Kind of a compilation of, of what we feel as a shared vision here, um, in Elgoma, specifically the Elgoma School District. So one of the questions is, um, like what opportunities might there be to connect from the community level to the new administration in the federal government? Uh, what ideas spark in which ways the federal government or states could support cross-sector partnerships that harness? The agency and creativity and power of communities to improve the conditions for health. And, um, they also ask things like what would you like to see? The new administration do to tackle challenges you have been working on in your practice and in your community? Um, so there's a series of questions. Again, we'll email those out and if you have feedback, I'd love to hear that, um, and I can present that. And finally, I think this is a great connection, um. Dr. Phyllis Meadows, uh, from the Christique Foundation is really interested in, uh, meeting with some representation from. Um, the school district. She's very interested in what we're doing here in Elgoma and she wants to see how she. And the foundation could support our efforts, um, to the programs that, and she, she had written and emailed the quality programs for children and youth in education. So it was, I kind of knew that was going to happen, but it was a little emailed today and so I look forward to more opportunities with that. And that's my report.
Thank you, Teal. Lots of good stuff. Any questions for Teal? And we'll, we'll take a serious look at your questions and see if we can get some feedback to you. All right. We didn't have any committee reports. Um, so we'll move on to other specific items for discussion. Um, the first item, the ad hoc committee for charter schools. Um, obviously, we have a need for, uh, a, a little bit of a harder work group because we have a lot to do in these next few months, so. Um, I would like to ask, um, I will chair the committee and I would like to ask Joanne. Would you be willing to be on it? I think the members are going to probably need to be able to have access to be able to zoom. And probably will be asked to do maybe some self-study, um, to make sure that we're all on top of what's happening with the charter schools. Um, so, uh, myself, Joanne and, um, Pat. Are you willing to be on the ad hoc committee for charter school?
Yep, that's fine.
Okay.
That would be good.
All right. Okay, so it'll be the three of us then. And then the other one, the finance committee meeting at date and time. I'm, I'm sort of going to, um. Back off on trying to commit to a date and time tonight. My intention with doing this is I really feel like since all of the budget, you know, the budget of the school. Needs to, all of our expenditures need to flow from our mission and our goals and so, so. I'm just feeling, especially with COVID and the lack of ability to meet face to face, there's been a real. Communication gap between everybody. So my thought with that. Again, to sort of review if I wasn't clear when I brought it up, is that I would like for an opportunity that administration and the finance committee. Board members and, um, of course, um. Jason, as part of the administration, but so that we have an opportunity on a regular basis and I don't even know how often. I had been thinking quarterly, but I'm almost thinking maybe this will be a piece that could be determined after our retreat. Um, but the objective would be to just have that. Opportunity to share how we're doing with things, especially if it's gonna have a dollar amount take to it. So that we can all be on the same page, so that we can give Jason information because he can't know what he has to be anticipating for the budget. If he doesn't know what we're thinking. And, and then the other way around, he can bounce back saying, whoa, that's not gonna work now, but maybe I could make it work later. Um, but I think it would be helpful to just have all parties have that. Little bit more often snapshot together so that we're all on the same page, but, um. I don't think we have to figure out a meeting date and time tonight. I think after our retreat, we can, we can, um. Figure out maybe when the first helpful one would be because the last thing we need to do is just take up more people's time for no reason, so. Um, okay, so we will move on to action items. I need a motion to approve.
I wanna throw this out at you.
Oh, all right.
As it kinda goes with that, but.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And. Members that are on.
Oh.
Mine won't have a, so we have some. I think a number of opportunities to, to look at, so we'll need to. I think look at the retreat as a way of saying, hey, these are some things we want to go forward with. Some of it's gonna pertain to. Uh, building grounds, maybe some of it's gonna contain finance, maybe some of it's gonna contain. A bunch of different things here and I'm just gonna go through, you know, what they are. So the first part is, we have extra solar panels. Cause the. Couple got destroyed by a fork, so. We got a horrible bundle of panels in the shop and. Really nobody wants to take them back, right? So. Here's a, a proposal about putting solar panels down at the elementary school. Okay, so don't have to make the decision right now. It'll be something that we. Next one, um. Is. The tennis court lighting. Um, so we wanna move that. Is usable, I would say. Um. Next one. Track. We want to get that beautiful track over there with nice rubberized surface, a lot of used maintenance and. That's a big dollar, huh? So I just wanted to throw this up.
Yeah.
To you guys, cause I think it's. Again, the obvious community is what we wanna do with the opportunities, to your point bar. Is it the right time to do things now? Should we wait here? Should we do this? Prioritize that. We're just wanna give everyone some thoughts and ideas on that and then once we have that all, you know, open. We could, you know, send it off to whatever committees need to meet specifically on that. But again, all this stuff comes about because we're in a financial standing, um, we take care of our things, we. I think I'm very progressive when it comes to, um, managing. The whole of areas, so. We have a different, very different approach in a lot of. Our neighbors, um, and I think it affords us. Communities. I always say it's harder to manage being successful than it is. Um, and it's, you know, not, so, um, cause it's hard, right? And you're always on the edge of things and you've gotta think a little bit differently, um, so. I'll make sure that the rest of the board members do get the same packet and, you know. We can go through with that, the board retreat, at least one, one, and get it out to, so our committees.
Okay. All right, then now we will move on to action items. I need a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one.
I shall move.
Oh, second.
By Joanne, seconded by Ann. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I heard Pat. Okay. Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the bills that were in your packet as well as those presented to us tonight.
So move.
All right.
Okay, we have a motion by Dave and a second by John. Um, questions or discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Do I need to read the entire resolution? All right, guys. I don't have to read all of the exhibits, though, right? Here's the first long page, all right. All right, I'm about to read the resolution. Resolution authorizing the defeatsance of a portion of the school district of Elgoma. Two million nine hundred fifteen thousand general obligation refunding bonds. Whereas the school district of Elgoma, Kiwanis County, Wisconsin, the district. Has sufficient funds on hand to defeat the remaining outstanding portion of the twenty thirty-four maturity. All of the twenty thirty-two maturity and a portion of the twenty thirty-one maturity, the, the feast bonds. Of the district's two million nine hundred fifteen thousand general obligation refunding bonds dated July eighteenth, twenty sixteen. The twenty sixteen bonds. Assuming that the feast bonds are called for prior redemption on April first, twenty twenty-four. Hereafter, the defeatsance of the feast bonds shall be referred to as the defeats. hereafter, the defeatsance of the defeatsance funds shall be referred to as the defeatsance. Whereas the school board deems it to be necessary, desirable, and in the best interest of the district to proceed with the defeatsance, now therefore it be resolved by the school board and the district. Section 1, Authorization of the Defeatsance. For the purpose of paying the cost of the defeatsance, the district hereby appropriates the sum of 595,000 or such sum as is sufficient from Fund 30 Funds on Hand, the defeatsance funds, which shall be used to fund the escrow account created below. Section 2, Escrow Agent, Escrow Agreement, Escrow Account. Associated Trust Company, National Association, Green Bay, Wisconsin, is hereby appointed escrow agent for the district for the purpose of ensuring the payment of the principal of and interest on the defeatsance. The district president and district clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute an escrow agreement substantially in the form attached here too, as Exhibit A, the escrow agreement. Such form may be modified by said officers prior to execution. The execution of such agreement by said officers to constitute full approval of any such modifications with the escrow agent for the purpose of effecting the provisions of this resolution. The defeatsance funds shall be deposited in a defeatsance escrow account, which is hereby created with the escrow agent pursuant to the escrow agreement for the purpose of retaining the required amount of cash, if any, and acquiring the United States obligations provided for in the escrow agreement. Upon transfer of the defeatsance funds to the escrow account, the taxes heretofore levied and not in the process of collection to pay debt service on the defeatsance bonds shall be abated to the extent such transfer, together with investment earnings thereon, is sufficient to pay the principal of and interest on the defeatsance bonds. But such abatement shall not affect the district's pledge of its full faith, credit, and resources to make such payments. The defeatsance escrow account created by the escrow agreement shall hereafter serve as the debt service or sinking fund for the defeatsance bonds. The escrow agents shall serve as a custodian of said debt service or sinking fund. Section 3, Redemption of the Defeatsance Bonds. The district hereby calls 110,000 of the 2031 maturity, 320,000 of the 2032 maturity, and 110,000 of the 2034 maturity of the 2016 bonds for redemption on April 1, 2024, all as provided in the escrow agreement. The district hereby directs the escrow agent appointed above to cause a notice of redemption for said portion of the defeatsance bonds to be given as provided in the escrow agreement. Section 4, Conflicting Resolutions, Severability, Effectivity. All prior resolutions, rules, or other actions of the district or any parts thereof in conflict with the provisions hereof shall be and the same are hereby rescinded insofar as they may so conflict. In the event that any one or more provisions hereof shall for any reason be held to be illegal or invalid, such illegality or invalidity shall not affect any other provisions hereof. The foregoing shall take effect immediately upon adoption and approval in the manner provided by law. Adopted and recorded this 22nd day of February 2021. So with that, I'm assuming this needs to be a roll call vote. I will ask for a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the defeatsance of a portion of the school district of Elgoma, 2,915,000 general obligation refunding bonds.
So move.
All right, I have a motion by John. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ann. This is a roll call vote. I will start with those of yous online. Dave?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Mick?
Yeah.
Joanne?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ann? And I also say yes. Motion carries.
Read that again.
I need a motion to approve the $500 ExxonMobil Educational Alliance Program donation from Forestville One Stop.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Motion made by Ann, seconded by Joanne. All in favor?
All right.
Motion carries. I need a motion to approve $649.61 donation from Bank of Luxor, Operation Keep Schools Clean.
I'll move.
Motion made by Joanne.
I'll second.
Second by John. All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the revision to the 2021-2022 school calendar.
The revision is, we made a little Google, we had teacher conferences on a Friday night. Like that too much, it was supposed to be the Thursday.
November 18.
So the revision was the changing of the teacher conferences from Friday to Thursday, as they should have been on the calendar to begin with.
I'll move that slightly. They come back and talk about that calendar again, because we are looking at timeframe from post-winter break. So we're throwing ideas down right now. It looks like we might consider taking spring break, turn then to, you know, for by the weekend at the points and then making sure that Friday, because a little nervous about basically four straight months. That one that doesn't always play well. So, but we also have, you know, benchmarks and things like that traditionally depend on. So, helpful for that long distraction.
All right, for anybody who couldn't hear what Nick was saying, he was saying that we may be hearing more revisions in the future. But for tonight, we are looking just at the date change for the teacher conference. Do I have a motion?
I'll move when we make the revision to the calendar.
All right, I have a motion by John, also, and a second. Any questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, any requests for future agenda items? Hearing none, I need a motion to go into executive session under Wisconsin's statute 19.85, subsections 1C, E, F, and I, for the purpose of personnel matters, hires, staffing resignations, administrator evaluation.
I still move.
Motion made by Joanne.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ann. This again is a roll call vote. Dave?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Mick?
Yeah.
Van?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
And I also say yes. Thank you, everyone on the phone or Zoom or whatever we are.